Okay, I'll call the fire commission meeting of June 12th to order. Everybody join me in the pledge.
Fire allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
All right, first item on our agenda is public comment. Do they have any? During none, move on to consideration of approval of the regular meeting minutes from May 8th. I just have one note under the chairman's report where it says chiefs need to get a complete inventory of the CVA bottles. It should be SCVA. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the previous regular meeting as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstained. What's the best?
One abstention. Chiefs reports.
That's me.
That's you.
Okay, good evening. I don't have a whole lot of exciting news to report. We had our Memorial Day service and parade and picnic that went well. As you can see, we do have all the reports in for the trucks. They're all serviced. Those bills have been filed. We still have some outstanding bills. We have one more month left in this fiscal year. I don't see any reason that we're going to go over. We did go over in the line item budget of the supplies and repairs, but under in the other, so the budget itself was going to be under. The ladder truck should go on the production line next week. Shouldn't see it sometime end of October.
Assistant chief is shaking his head.
Nope.
In opposition.
Oh, I'm sorry, 22nd, not June 22nd. I got June and July. So next month on the 22nd. And we had a staff meeting between the two departments. So we're working together to streamline the policies of both departments for mutual aid, for out of town responsive, for RIT, May Day policies. So we're looking at all of these key SOPs and making sure that we're both on the same page.
Let entertain a moment. Chief, accept Chief Baker's report?
Aye. Second.
Baden seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Chief McCollum is not here tonight, so we will not have a report from him. We'll have a report from Chief Assistant Chief DeKalis regarding any legislation, covering legislation that may affect either department.
All right, gentlemen and ladies, what I brought was what I had handed in a while back. It did make mention of the fact that the changes in the State Fire Prevention and Control Administration. And that has been completed and has been accepted in its modified entirety. I think the biggest change is in this document that everybody here has is the fact that the Fire Prevention and Control Administration is now made up of 18 members, and it represents a wider variety of representatives from the fire service. There are also two non-voting members on that commission. And I think the most positive thing is the fact that it gives more power to the state fire administrator. You're going to be able to get a lot more stuff done without having to go through state police. In terms of finances and other money allocated around states, if your fire school will come directly now from the state fire administrator, as opposed to the regional schools, those still get the funding, but it will come from the commission now. In the past, a lot of that came directly through legislature. And now it's going to be consolidated, streamlined. So if you read this document, I have to be honest with you folks, it's very self-explanatory and it's well-written. And I think it'd be hard for us to have any questions about it after you read it. It's well-written. So what I was told, maybe I misunderstood, was I'm more concerned about the proposed OSHA changes because that's where we're going to see the requirement for finances. So I've gone to a couple of seminars already and then go a little couple more, but I have some handouts here, Fred, that I'd like to give you. Okay with that?
Yeah, just because that's not the way I wrote it up on the agenda, let's make a motion to add to the agenda.
Or not business, for everyone.
Yeah, let's just make a motion to add an item to the agenda, discussion of OSHA changes and how they may affect the two fire departments.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who's so carried?
It's only six, so who's going to go one?
While we're transitioning, can I ask you a question about 5483?
Yeah, let me get that.
Go ahead.
Well, not having read it, right? It's self-explanatory. Do you see any, you foresee any changes that would affect what's going on in Bethel or Southfield?
Based on this?
Not OSHA, the legislation that just passed.
I think, I think the biggest thing you would be concerned with would be who are the people who are going to represent us? I know it's different organizations. State Fire Association has a couple of seats on there. You know, the State Fire Marshal, the State Fire Mechanics, the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities, all those little groups. And it depends on what their input is and I think how it would affect us individually. The only one in the past that I personally have had issues with was the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities' input. And a lot of that had to do with the workman's comp benefits. Very much a supporter adequate benefits for career or volunteer, and they are not. They're looking to save money. And their input into that, that all aspects of finances regarding firefighter benefits, I don't think has ever been honest, of course. So what would that, how would that affect us? I think we have to look locally at supporting some of the holes in that. We just talked about this a couple hours ago. You get hurt now, it's about $660 a week is your workman's comp benefits. And there's very few people that are making $660 a week. You'd have to supplement that somehow. Are there other organizations to supplement? Yeah, there are. State Fire Association has some supplemental payments. For a volunteer, you get like $25 a day, and your children, and that's only for five. That's for six days a week. Your children get like $25 a day for seven days a week. If you're a career, you get $23.50 for five days a week. It's not a lot. And really, when you come down to it, you know, someone's going to have a very difficult time surviving. We did have a member of our department who was injured outside the fire service. And I saw what that work it is going through, is continuing those group just to survive financially. And I think based on the conservative outlook and supporting the different fire service groups, pay your volunteer, that is where the potential for additional funds locally may have to come into play. It's just my opinion.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
So I think you look around and see what does it cost me to raise my family? All right, now the second one is just notes based on the first section. Now explain that as we move forward.
I just want to double check that you did pass the report for the chairman.
No, I inadvertently skipped over it. I'll come back to it. I got excited to think we might get out early tonight. And then I remembered that Bill was going to talk, and that went right out the window.
My mother said I never kissed the bologna stone. I took a bite out of it as well. Just her soul. All right, the one that says reasons for change. The proposed OSHA changes are federal. They are in the review stage now. The federal OSHA Commission has extended the time on this. These proposed changes now till the end of July was going to be in May. What I did here today was give you a brief overview, but I focused mainly on the training aspect of it. It's going to affect 21 different NFPA changes. Now, you know, you may have an NFPA book on muscles, all right? How they're made, how they're used, all that kind of stuff. And it might be 40 pages long. But you may look at NFPA 1500, the Fire Safety Guidelines, which is as big as a Bible, all right? So is the NFPA 1500 one of those 21? Yeah, it is. If I were to bring in you here the proposed changes, gentlemen, it's 200 pages long. And the overview, which I gave, I gave, happy event, the overview just referencing the sections that are going to be changed. The different parts of the OSHA standards, different parts of the NFPA changes or the NFPA guidelines, that's 20 pages long. So basically, I just wanted to give you a taste of this here. There hasn't been any OSHA changes for the fire service in 40 years. And I'll tell you when the last one was, you know, while I remember it, especially those that have been around. It was, an example was the two in, two out. That's 40 years ago, all right? So really, nothing substantial has taken place since then. So what was the impetus for all these changes? The line of duty deaths that are cost involved. This is all cost-based changes. And they, OSHA openly admits that. They're coming up with approximately 72 firefighters on the average having lost their lives in the last five years. That is not the number of firefighters and the injuries that might have been. As you see somewhere down in the page editor, possibly second page, this adds, this is based on, I think, a little over a million firefighters being considered active in the United States, and of those, a third are truly all volunteer. So we're going to focus pretty much on the volunteers, but let's get about a third of the way down the front page. It said the basis for these numbers, oh, there is just above it. 331,472 are estimated to be all voluntary departments that are being affected by this. Approximately 1,054,611 firefighters nationally are considered to be active certified firefighters. Are there more than that? Absolutely there are, but they just don't meet all the standards. So what we're doing here is the basis for these numbers comes from the United States Fire Academy, FEMA, the NFPA, NASH, OSHA, NWC, National Wildlife Conference Group, and then the Bureau of, oh, God, I just went blank. I'm sorry. But when they took all of these different agencies to directly relate to the fire service and put them together, OSHA still feels, still feels that not all the injuries and all the deaths were being correct on the report. So they feel that there's more than an average of 72, and there's probably many thousands more people over here, and we see benefits. Also remember that not all states, not all 36 are OSHA states. They don't recognize. Connecticut is an OSHA state. Whatever federal guidelines are going to be enacted, Connecticut will automatically adopt them. And OSHA uses the NFPA guidelines for interpretation of any type of review of any individual fire department. So let's see, moving right along here. Okay, let's go to page two. Connecticut, me, and OSHA state, all the firefighters that will get certified in Connecticut are certified at the national level. And the organizations they use are either Pro Border or IFSEC. Those are nationally certified companies that come in here, look at Connecticut programs, and deem that they follow all the OSHA, NASH, NFPA guidelines. As a result, any firefighter certified in Connecticut is considered to be certified nationally. So you could take your Connecticut cert, pretty much go anywhere. Now, there may be some states that, you know, want to add some stuff to their own. Florida's an example. Florida won't recognize Pro Border IFSEC. I have a brother, personally, my brother, married and died in chief from waterberry for 42 years. Associates masters, associates bachelor's masters, and two six-year certificates in fire service related stuff. And the state of Florida wouldn't recognize, which is typical. We're down there. They don't want people coming in from outside of Florida and working there. But yet there are individual standards in Florida that don't meet a lot of the Pro Border IFSEC, and it is hard. So whatever. Moving right along, about a third of the way down, some of the proposed changes are simple and some are very complex. The safety ones are going to be complex. The bystanders will implement the mandatory sections through the use of the shall word and the word should for those items to be used as a guide. I would, I would say, based on what I saw at today's seminar, that that shall word is probably going to be about two-thirds of the guidelines, and should will be about a third, which means that the compliance is going to be strict. Approximately 21 NFPA standards will be used, all which are already in existence. So not changing any NFPA stuff. They're just going to start even more of what's over there. The proposed changes began to develop in the years 2015, 2016 at the national level by approximately 13 different fire services. OSHA's goal is to establish recognized tiers. What does that mean? And this is something like guys like John and Doug and I are really going to have to be concerned about. You're going to have to make tiers of your members, and you're going to have to follow the implementation of that tier concept. So number one, the first tier that you're going to recognize is that of a trainee. And you will have to have stringent guidelines on what that trainee can do. How you're going to train that trainee, what gear they're going to have, what they're going to be allowed to do until such time as they complete their training program. Number two is the incipient level, which is basically industrial tech responses. Now, I just finished my hazmat tech refresher down at Vanderbilt's last week, and there's a good example of the industrial fire brigade. They are not going to be an industrial fire brigade because they don't want to meet these new standards. But they will stretch a hose line and they will put air packs on, but they thoroughly expect us to come in and run the show. Okay, so that's what the incipient type of firefighter will be. The three is advanced exterior. They allow that. We've been working on that in Connecticut now for about five, six years. I teach that advanced exterior class, and what that basically does is it's a member will do everything except go one side of the floor. I give you certified if you're a firefighter, they don't want to be, so they can make a hybrid, raise a ladder, stretch hose line, you know, run a pump, all that kind of stuff. But they're not going in, they're basically not certified on an air pack. They're not fighting car fires, they're not doing anything where they're going to have an air pack cap. Number four is interior certified. That's us, all right? Myself, John, Doug, Fred, we're interior firefighters, and I know some of you guys are too. So what does that mean? They're going to look now for all firefighters to become fire-worried fighters too. That's where the cost starts to come in, guys. So with all the other standards, with all the adoption of NFPA 21 guidelines, you can see that firefighter one program, possibly the fighter two is going to be expanded. The question is to what level? Well, the guys in Long Island are going to say it's a minimum of 100 hours added to fire one. So fire one now is 200 hours of testing, and you can add another 100 hours to that. That's, that's a big burden for somebody, and it's a big burden financially. You know what? I teach all the time. I don't charge for my classes. I don't need the money, but most fire departments do. I think the average books now, 1,800, Brooklyn gets about 1,800. The fire schools are getting 1,400, and that's with state funding. Right, so if you go another 100 hours, I think it's reasonable. I think you're going to raise the price by a third. So nine, 18, 27, you know, you're looking at probably $3,000 for firefighter one. That's going to kick you in the pants here, all right? Because as we get new recruits in, someone's going to have to train them. As we get further in here, you will see that the requirements for the person, people doing the training is also going to be more. Whoever does the training from ally will have to be certified, and you're going to have, you're the commission, the local fire departments, you're going to have to certify those people to the level that you can defend them in court for the material that they've been sent. And that's a great way to close OSHA's theater. So, and then number five there are support members. These are people who will come to the fire scene and they'll do rehab. They can come and join the fire department, do maintenance on the fire trucks, things like that. So I think if you manage a lot of this stuff, some of the increased costs may be offset by people performing support type activities. Page three, there must be developmental written guidelines or plans in effect. Now, the next four, I listed it, one, two, three, four. I was not sure what the presenter said for number two, so I left it out. But number one is you have to be competent, like all OSHA stuff. Competency has to be established. It has to be tested and record kept, all right? The second one, if I'm not mistaken, was certification, but he went off on a tangent. I could write down, tangent it up. And he left before I got just, number three is annual refreshers. You have to do annual refreshers at whatever level these guidelines now require. And number four, this is where another large cost is coming in, Connecticut is professional development. All must, must be done at no cost per member, which means that the fire department, wherever the supporting agency is, will have to pay for all of this stuff. So your officers have to be certified at a higher level. They infer today that to be a, wear a white hat from now on, you have to be fire officer, screen fire officer. So what does that mean? That means a lot of schooling. Someone's going to have to pay for those classes. There are going to run probably between 14 and 60 hours each, or some of the substitute things. If you're like in my case, one of my degrees is fire protection technology, so I'm covered by that. But, you know, I went to school for years to get that degree. They supposedly take a fire officer, three or fire officer four. And they're looking at once this is implemented, which will be within a year or so, that then it'll be a year of transition in which you have to implement these programs. So what I'm telling you here, within the next two years, this is going to be on your plate, and you're going to have to finance it. And it's not going to be easy. The next part of that page there says the actual vocational training will follow six NFPA standards. So just the basics that you're going to have to follow through the NFPA guidelines, the six that I listed there. Like, as we all, NFPA 1001, it's your fire one and fire two, and they also will put in their NFPA 4007, which is your RIT team. RIT team is going to be part of that 300 hours now. You're going to have to certify the people who are coming in. And I'm not sure what they're going to do with fire one or fire two. You're going to have to get RIT team certified, all right? And again, why? Because this is where they're finding the big cost management for firefighters lost in line of duty or injured on the scene is getting them out of the building and getting them treated as quickly as possible. And you do that with an aggressive low trade RIT team, all right? And as John mentioned earlier, at a meeting the other day, John, Doug, both there, establishing, you know, regional RIT teams. A lot of this stuff that we're talking about here tonight will be best addressed on a regional basis. Why? Because the cost factor, all right? Role rescue teams, hazmat teams, RIT teams, et cetera, et cetera, all the way down. So it's going to be almost impossible for small, you know, fire departments or volunteer departments to meet and maintain those standards. Test annually, make sure you have the snuff, and then do the initial training. So I, my personal opinion, and it was brought out there today by everybody, a little bit of regionalization on a lot of stuff. And I think it's the way to help save money, okay? So you can see here that in order to, like, the fire officer standards at 23, marine firefighting, NFPA 1005. City damage, for a boat on Lake Catalina, they're going to have to meet the NFPA 1005 to run that boat. You know, they probably didn't see that coming a couple of years ago. They got it, but this is, this is where it's going. Wildfire, if you have a forest fire crew, they've got to meet the NFPA standards to go wildfire, or you got to get your red card. That was discussed in detail today. And then, you know, tech rescue, you got to do the NFPA 1006. But what they do, allow you to do is you can pick one of the standards that you choose to provide the service for. So if you don't want to do tech rescue, you don't want to do marine firefighting, all this stuff, you don't have to. But if you do, if you've got to train to that level, you've got to pay for it. You need, okay? The bottom of the page there, if they reference safety officers, a safety officer does not have to be certified, but their training must align or cover the professional standards that are set up by the NFPA. Then you must test to show knowledge and competency annually. So like, I know John and Chris, we're 20 safety officers each year after the elections. That's all good. At what point, they better be able to look at the national standard. And how do you do that? Oh, you should put somebody in there, safety officer. It's already got the certifications. But then, somebody's got to pay for that, all right? Last page. Okay, and basically what I did here is just a, basically an overview on competencies. What's involved, certifications, things like that. Make sure the word is responsible, and testing must be done annually through the guidelines and standards. Somebody's going to have to come up with a program or locally, or you're going to have to hire somebody to come in and do this. And that's a third place that I see additional cost. We have to hire, you know, a teaching group or testing group to come in annually, test all these different guidelines. It's not going to be cheap. And then somebody has to do all the record keeping. So do I think it's achievable locally? I do. But in my opinion, think like in a medical fire, I'm just throwing out my personal opinion. And hire somebody 20 hours a week to come in and do the record keeping for you. I'm going to tell you, I'm doing it now, and I'm not getting any other, all right? Somebody's going to have to do that. Do I have all my certifications? I do, and many more, but, okay, guys, I'm subbing one yourself. I want some order.
I should all look at that over eighty.
I know. Say something over here. So the, let's go down to the bottom. I already talked about this transitional period. The last third, authority having jurisdiction is the fire. The AHJ will determine compliance and implementation levels. They will sign off on the members. Now, you're going to have to meet the NFPA 1021 for fire officer three and four, for being a chief officer. They talked about that. There's no way, there's no way that's going to change, not the way they talk today. Compliance is based on the needs of the organization, and these needs are what you actually do every day and what you can defend and be successful at it. So conclusion here, you've got to choose what you're going to do, got to figure out how much this is going to cost. You're going to teach it, you're going to test it, and you're going to do the record keeping, all right? The second handout there is just some of my personal notes from the first section of these proposed OSHA changes. And I would say that is probably the first 20 pages. I tried to convince guys as much as I could. But I still got, you know, 181 pages to go. Are you going to go through them? Yes. Is it going to be? No. But I think, trying to give a good overview, kind of what's coming. Somebody's going to have to put some money in the bank here in the future, and we're also going to have to take a hard look at what services we provide and what services we're not going to provide, and who we're going to get to do it with. Any questions?
Yeah, I got just a couple.
Sure.
You said fire officer three or four to be a chief officer? How many we got in town that are already met that requirement? Chief, you have any in your department?
Not to that level, no. Oh, you just made.
So we have, we have one person in town at this point that'd need the requirement to be a white hat.
I don't even know how many are fire officers two, one or two made.
And then they are.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
It's a lot of.
I mean, do we, do we have people pursuing those certifications currently?
We focused recently on people trying to get their fire instructor two. And I think as you know now, in order to work on a live burn, there has to be a fire instructor two at each level, and it has to be one, it's all receiving like the command post. And that can be, if the chief is running the command post, it's fire officer two. That covers it. But inside, it's got to be at least one fire officer at each level, which you burn in a stinking place, and one is going to be, charge the actual fire operation inside. And one is gonna be, uh, charge the actual fire operation inside. So, we had to get people to get up to fire officer, John and Doug will tell you. And we just got, um, probably three or four in our last year. But, uh, we can't go and rent the state fire schools unless we can show that we will have a number of, uh, fire instructor twos that will meet the standards. So what are we doing right now to meet that? You know, and we get, uh, a date that we might go to New Haven, if we only have two fire instructor twos. One of them's gonna burn on one floor and one of them's gonna have a fire. The other fire instructor two is the scout post. As opposed to having multiple fires, they do none on each floor, maybe two on each, their, their first floor. This is, we don't have enough people. So what, what's your other alternative? Gotta hire somebody to come down. So you gotta hire a fire instructor two for a day. Um, sometimes the fire schools will offer, give you one. Um, or they'll fill in, it's like your safety officer or whatever, which fire instructor two will now be part of safety officer. Um, and, uh, this is gonna cost you more money. So, right now with the Virgil School, the Torrington, you know, official county school, has semi-implemented these standards, it's thousands of dollars a day now. Because official county school, you go down to New Haven, it's gonna be four and six hundred dollars. So you can see, if you're gonna meet all these standards right through the T, like they do in Torrington, it's gonna double the cost. And how often do you like burns? Well, it's gonna be certified, competent, and defendable. Okay, and everybody's got to do at least one live burn a year. So what's that mean? We're about there, somebody's working Sundays, somebody's working nights, probably gonna do two to four live burns a year. So is that gonna, this could double the cost right there. By doing together like we do now, absolutely. So I, you can just see that a lot of these projected, um, guideline changes are gonna cost us some money.
Oh, I think the thing right now, the thing that concerns me the most is, you're talking about impl- it's being implemented within a year, two years?
Two years.
And we don't have anybody that's currently certified to go at fire officer level to be a chief officer.
One other thing, Fred, really, all I talked about here today was training. I didn't get into all the other, for example, the, uh, OSHA changes that are coming. A lot of it is gonna be, um, I'll give you an example, which is my area of expertise that I spend a lot of time on. It's incident command and pre-planning and the implementation of a pre-fire plan. Now, are we ahead of the curve here about this? I think we are. We have, uh, computers under dashboards, Tommy has done a good job of putting a lot of information in, on pre-planning, like that. I have locations, types of buildings, construction, all that other stuff, which is gonna help. But what you will have to do now by the new standards is, you will have to make damn sure that if that information is in that computer, you're gonna use it at the scene of the fire. Because if something goes wrong, that information's right there at your fingertips. If you didn't use it as incident commander, you're in a lot of trouble. Alright? Another good, simple example is giving a good size up. You know, people, you know, give me a hard time because I give a, a long size up. Size up shouldn't take more than fifteen seconds. You know, cartoons on the scene, they got a two and a half story, with frame structure approximately, uh, twenty-five by fifty. I have heavy smoke showing on the B Bravo side on the second floor. A cartoon's establishing green, we have the command, engine six for the command, I want to issue three for the second floor. Alright? You better start saying that. Because that is gonna be your IAP, your incident action plan from this way forward. If you deviate from that, you're gonna be able to justify how you deviated from that. The, the guys maybe didn't hear you, and they stretched that first line to the first floor rear, when he's blowing out the second floor outside. Now you gotta be stretched, go up the stairs, take that, instead of one room going, it's out of the roof, it's coming down the hallway, stuff like that. So, um, and then you're gonna have to be able, from the incident command standpoint, to do all the stuff that's required. Assign a safety officer, establish force, like get a RIT team, make sure you got your two and two I, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All that is coming, changes. And you, I don't care who you are, whether you're the newest lieutenant or a, a long time chief. Guys know I've been shooting six different departments, alright? You better know what you're talking about, because this is coming. Alright? So what I did tonight with this, you know, with your, basically just that training, I didn't touch incident command, I didn't touch anything like that. So you take that and you multiply it probably by fifteen to twenty different things, you see it's coming. Alright? Our, is the fire service fighting it? Well, now we gotta spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to fight this. Instead of cafeteria, I mean, all these OSHA changes are now open to the year that you buy. But, um, how much of that are they gonna pay? The main departments are, uh, cost. Yeah, you got a thousand guys. Your fire department, five hundred, make a thousand guys, can imagine what's it gonna cost for all this stuff. Well-known volunteers.
More concerned about being able to meet the training requirements.
Of what?
Being able to meet the training requirements, yeah. Well, they, they ask volunteers?
But you know what, Fred, today, today's meeting was at the, uh, um, it's the Kankka Fire Strugglers, monthly meeting. And, uh, I, I saw a guy just, just shocked, shaking their heads, because they're not like this happy to be signing. They didn't see a lot of this coming. The guy that was there was the director of, uh, pretty state master, pretty sharp guy, gave the program today. And, uh, they were, they were shaking their heads on what they're gonna develop. You know, you should have kind of been at this point, to see some of this coming. Are we gonna be okay here? Do I think we need to move to the add? So, but we, we tend to have, I think, a little bit higher level competence here, trained regularly. But your question is the training. Um, where's that gonna go? You may end up hiring part-time training officer, twenty hours a week to come in and do it. And by the way, what I didn't tell you was, this also applies to EMS. So the EMS people are gonna have to meet these OSHA standards. And, uh, a lot of them are already doing it, when you recertify now, it's EMT, do it online. Uh, John, how many miles outside is this?
Uh, there's forty hours, C and P.
How many?
Forty hours.
Forty hours. And, uh, and, you know, it's self-testing, but you have to be able to defend it. So even though you're doing it home tonight, and completing it, submitted, or whatever, will use that program. Yeah, and all your guy comes in and says, okay, Chief Ivanouska, Chief McAllister, in the front row there, and they sit us down. I think they got a competency sheet, a question list, and say, okay, Chief Ivanouska, uh, this, this W R is a cardiac risk. Let's see, let's see, take care of that. Or, uh, I was EMTI for you, Chief McAllister, I want to see you intubate, start an ID on the station right now. So, you know yourself, you can't self-certify, they have the option to come in, and you better be able to defend it. And that's at all levels, you won't receive, come down.
Oh, so you, you talked about the, the annual refresher on competency testing. Is that gonna be done, like, in-house to your own training department, or is it gonna be, gonna be at the state level, or?
Why? Whoever does that, you know, they, they have to be certified. And you have to, whoever that person's certified, they better be competent. You gotta be able, you mean the commission, town have to be able to defend that. If your question is to your departments, or they, they don't know what to talk about, alright? And you got a guy that's working a couple of jobs and raising a couple of kids, yeah, maybe he's fire instructor two, but how much time is he using? She's better look at this stuff, and they easily get tripped up. I'm semi-retired, but I also did this for a career of a hundred years, so this, this is not gonna be easy. So you may have to hire a group to come in and do this, which is considered their additional cost. Or, my opinion, I can do this for a couple more years, but I'm not gonna do that. I can't, I'm not gonna lie to you. You're gonna have to give me somebody like her at the firehouse, twenty hours a week, I'll give her a stack of stuff and say, I'm just gonna give you, or you need individual records, go through the records and show me, read, show off her training. Now I gotta reschedule another training session, if the people didn't make it Monday night, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And that's just for one subject. They show up for a live burn, you know, I chase people down the street, John and Doug will tell you, we do this all, you, you did. He chases people day and night to get them, to, to, uh, come around for their training and stuff, and stuff.
Yeah, it's only gonna, it's only getting harder, it's just.
And I see some of the career departments are doing, let's say a guy's been out sick for a month, and he comes back to work. And they did a lot of heavy recertification over the summer, that they were out for the summer. They come back, they gotta kick that guy off line for two weeks, he gets a lot of snuff. So what do they do for two weeks? They're hypers of overtime, hit spot. Imagine what that costs. So, hey, go to state fire academy, or, or your department, and maybe implement, or they at least have a fire squad. It's gonna go for sixteen, which now they go for eighteen weeks. So you gotta pay to have training another two weeks, after they started your career fire out. With the two weeks and nine and a half, cover that Vegas state, et cetera, et cetera. It's gonna be tough on all fire departments.
So any other questions, comments?
Everybody wanted to talk about this one.
Thanks for bringing the mood down. Yeah. Thanks for bringing the mood down.
Yeah, well, listen, I, I'm just trying to get John ahead of the curve, you know?
This has been coming for a long time.
It has, it's been coming three years now.
Because in two thousand eleven, I was the training director for Norwalk.
Yeah?
There was not enough hours in the year for me to train the guys on the minimum OSHA requirements. Let alone all the other firefighting requirements.
How many firefighters were, were there in two thousand one?
Hundred fifty.
How many?
Hundred fifty.
Hundred fifty, were you the only training officer?
No, I had my company officers too. I was, I was, oh, no, we have, we have thirty-two officers.
No, how many were in the training?
Oh, you're lucky, you're right.
Just the one guy had to train a hundred fifty.
Well, we subbed it out to our captains and departments. But the problem is, like I said, there's not enough time to do the required OSHA. Let alone ladders and everything else, entry level things, you just couldn't do it.
I, I just told you, I can't do it.
Couldn't do it.
Gotta get help.
And, and the, the answer at the time when I said I did, I cannot comply, was, well, do some this year and the next year, get what you couldn't do. Uh, chief, you understand, it's an annual requirement. And then they, you know, it's, but it's me that's, gotta sign the paper.
And you're going home, going to bed at night, but that issue.
And it was there, but I just managed to let the chief know, it was coming his way. Then he didn't like that.
But even if the hourly requirements of a firefighter alone is over.
And like you said, guys out injured, try and catch them. EMS certification, there's, uh, EMT refreshers for us, it's five classes, usually done in January, when it's. Yeah, and, and that's all-day classes, and now you're splitting the city, half your, half your men are out of service. So you're covering the city with half the department. And it's just, it's physically, then when I did my officer three, it was, I chose not to do officer four because of the level of function just wasn't there for me.
So, you know, one thing that we can look at here at Torrington, so let's be proactive about this. Just put a committee, government, city, local, adult, have a recognition, represent these firefighters. And, uh, start to work out this proactive. I don't know what else to tell you.
This, this is scary stuff.
It is, yeah, it's very concerning.
And also, forget this stuff here, if they sign off fraudulently, they go to jail.
Yeah.
And also, if you don't sign off, there goes your grants.
That's right, no grants.
If you don't, you don't meet OSHA requirements, your federal grants are gone.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the, the financial aspect of it is, is one thing. It's the, it's the compliance aspect really concerns me. No compliance without the money.
Was it, was it Charleston that's chief of jail because of the knife, the six and nine dead?
No, I mean, he was charged, but the place where the, uh, sergeant went to jail, there's young guys up in upstate York, they're outside, it's a car. And that, that, that kid did a year and a half to jail.
One in South Carolina was, uh, for a warehouse.
For a warehouse.
And the biggest concern, I don't even think it's money, it's time.
There isn't hours in the day. I had a fire department playing forty hours a week, plus the overtime I have. So some of these guys, I was getting sixty, seventy hours a week. Yeah. How many hours is a volunteer's full time job?
To either put it to class or to find a class that's conducive to the work schedule. Whether they work weekends or work nights.
Yeah, that's what I say, the, the volunteers are gonna be short, I mean, they, they work, they're just volunteering. How you gonna make that requirement? It's not, where the pay departments, at least they're in the buildings or they're available.
I'm sure Mr. Selectman will be able to put a fire department on next year?
So this, actually, you're gonna have to go for, uh, a cheaper training officer or something.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of a cheaper, maybe a part-time training officer, but really, I think it can get done. You gotta come up with guys here, alright? I think we can start to get this done, but I, I gotta say, for a hundred time here tonight, we need everybody to come to work in a fire out. In general, here, for twenty hours a week to do, do the paperwork. If I could go in and lump it on somebody else's desk, just focus on the hands-on and setup, what a big, you know, relief on my shoulders.
Bill, I think, I think you had a good comment there. You need to start a, a team, a little subcommittee, somebody from the commission and the departments. Uh, you gotta get a handle on this, because it's gotta go into the budgets. You know, the, it's gotta go through the, the whole gamut of the, the board of selectmen, the fire commission, and board of selectmen, board of finance. That this is coming down the line.
We're not even talking about going to fires here. I spent an hour and a half in that building the other night, along with these two guys, if I can figure out what's wrong here. Bethel, Bethel's not a small, it's a small city. We have all the, the small, old, big city challenges in this community now, especially with all the building. You know, you got the old headquarters, there are cell here, all that research and development. And I spent a couple of days down there in Vanderbilt. I have, this is, this is the real deal. Down here, you make King Industries, King Industries is Vanderbilt. Uh, they, uh, it's.
We have Vanderbilt, it's tough. Menfield's right over east, uh, west of East Hampton, so. They're all over.
The point being is that it's, it now grows and progresses, so the requirements, and, you know, and it still bothers me a lot. I found two families living in storage, you heard of fire call a couple of weeks ago. And here, and I remember here, this, in this, there's a, that. And I'm not gonna say, we had a fire last night, found six mattresses on the third floor. This is what we're dealing with. And, and I can talk about training, we're starting to get the wagons out the door and go to the fire call. You gotta, proactive, you gotta get something going.
Yeah. Pretty de-incentivizing for these members to, you know, look at that mountain ahead of them, you know? Almost been there forever, it's like, I gotta, what? It's enough. It's depressing, someone who's, you know, been there a while, it's not gonna wanna, like, stick it up.
I think you can make it palatable, there's gonna have to be a support system there. It's gonna make it palatable, or it's gonna lose people, absolutely.
I think OSHA has to do something to, it made the stepping stone is the hourly requirement. There's too many requirements and not enough hours. If I couldn't do it with guys I had forty to eighty hours a week as my prisoners. How is this chief gonna do it with guys that are there, drill training one night a week for four hours? You know, I had them for sixty, eighty, uh, hours a week, and I didn't have enough hours.
Right, when I, I'm the career firefighter for twenty-seven years, and I can remember a training officer falling up and saying, hey, uh, Joe Smith here, he's been out sick for the last three training sessions, and he's the last thing, to come me out of service and bring him down. And you can put that whole section out of service, just because this idiot hasn't been coming to work. Bring him down and go to training, and, and I mean, it, it just, you know, if you try to swap them with another company, then it'd be three guys. Take that one guy that come here, somebody's gonna fire, anybody, and it's, it's never.
That's why it's hard to pay. It's the one truck, make the rounds, drop them all, and they return it.
And how much time is that?
Well, if they wanted to get out, they'd have to.
Your career, your advocacy.
Thank you.
Alright, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion to accept Assistant Chief McAllister for, uh, the impending OSHA changes.
So. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Foes? So, Harry, uh, just working backwards a little bit, I inadvertently skipped over my own report. I don't have much to report, uh, and sadly, as I'm sure all of you already know, I should repeat all the time for the commission. I'm sure that, uh, Daniel will be looking to replace him at some point. So, for the time being, we're before person commissioned again, and then, um, you know, tonight I wanted to address the, um, the SCBA. the S C B A bottle replacement plan for the next ten years, excuse me, for both departments. Assistant Chief Collins not here, so we'll, uh, we'll address Stone Hills tonight and, uh, we'll put that on the agenda again. Next month to address Bethels. And, uh, we'll also address the, uh, year-end financials for both departments next month. So I skipped over the financials for this one, just do a year-end next month. That's all I had is chairman's report, so I'll accept the motion to accept the chairman's report.
So both, we accept their report.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carry. All right, so the next item on the agenda is review, but after Rattus maintenance and pump test records. Uh, that was supposed to be for both departments, I don't believe we have anything from Bethel. So put that on the agenda again, next month to address Bethels, but we do have Stone Hills. So I'll just ask Chief Baker or even Chief W. Skousen, whoever's most prepared, just to run through them. Kind of give us a hit on what you had for your Rattus. Is there any red flags, any big ticket items that need repaired? I spied some three of them. That was a big one, so mostly new.
Engine three's out, it's not, it's really has to go back.
Go back?
Needs to steer a much, but that'll be ordered.
Yeah, I mean, other than that, there wasn't really any, any surprises, the, you know, the thing that was driving the cost is age. Or getting more, uh, expensive to, uh, to repair things, bring out the engine three. Um, had issues with, uh, with the pump as far as valves and A T speed. Um, rotated a lot more than, uh, in the past. Um, some of the rods were bent that we need to replace.
Do you, do you run like the, the nylon ball valves or do you have stainless valves in your trucks? What service required on those stainless ball valves?
Um, like I said, the, when we got engine three back, it started to be too power steering fluid. So we, uh, had to have a, uh, power steering line replaced and, um, I mean, power steering box were in, they ordered it. That's gonna have to be where the, um, five inch hard, uh, the, uh, five inch gate, uh, the pump had to be, um, rebuilt, so right now we have the lower, so that's a significant cost.
And that, the one that is yet to be built, I just thought, uh, you have to repair if you have to buy that.
You're talking about steel part of the gate?
The gate, uh, uh, incoming, uh, the, the, the five inch, and they did, did have to rebuild. It's like, it's a great test.
One year's.
It's a whole lot.
This is on T three. All the problems are on one truck.
Major problems. Yeah, uh, the other two, uh, were in and a half minutes, so, uh, that's a side.
All your service was done gallons a night on, on, on trucks. I know the, on the new ladder truck, they promised us, uh, free service, P O T service and fire matic. So are we gonna, are we gonna send all the trucks to Fire Matic or just the one truck to Fire Matic?
So we just the one truck.
I know, I, curious, I mean, Fire Matic is, is the Pierce dealers, is there a reason we don't use Fire Matic for, you know, service? Uh, repair service on the vehicles?
At the time, it was, um, convenience of, uh, location. And it would not, we have, well, it was rocks. But we haven't really looked into it since they opened up the, uh, bathroom.
It's just, I don't know, it always kind of baffled me that, I mean, even downtown, we can have all these trucks and it seems to me that, like, you know, the Pierce's or, you know, Fire Matic is the Pierce dealer, it seemed to me that you could get factory service, that would be the better option.
Of course, the most cost of it, obviously, we got.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, cost is, you know, I mean, obviously, cost to drive back, I mean, something to look into, I guess, is. You know, we, I actually, we're gonna send the new truck to Fire Matic because it's free for, I forgot how long he said, but.
I think it's the life of the truck.
That would be exciting.
I don't, I don't remember it was, I don't remember it was long, but it said life.
I think it's the life of that truck, the only one that was, um, that I think Nicholas was working on a, a deal for was that, uh, um, kinda like OnStar thing, whatever they call it.
Yeah, that was, yeah, they threw that in.
And I have that, uh, subscription for five years for free. My provider, and he said make it ten, and so I don't know.
I think we went with eight, I think.
So he's all excited about that.
Yeah, there's no warranty on that for the seven years for the engine or, or.
Yeah, yeah. I don't, just something to consider, I guess, I mean, if we're gonna be sending one truck to Fire Matic for factory service, maybe, you know, get a cost analysis and see if it's practical to send the other three.
That's the way it is for like most cars, people will be used to, uh, dealing with a lot of work, he's there once, of course, he's out there.
And I don't know if it's officially yet or not, but I, I heard rumors, and I might be solving up, so we might be looking for it anyways. So.
There's a bunch of places that do good repairs on fire at rest.
Sure is.
Um, in town, you barely go more than two years without going to bed. And it's, or that rest work. And then a couple of years ago, they went to, but down garage, just to location. Right, so, see, all they do is check your oil, locate the stuff left, yeah, by release, such, which out. Uh, these, uh, which is in, uh, Tracy's garage. Is that what you're always been? And they went down, I'm pretty, I'm just the chief, they went down there and, and looked at it, had the guys to shop about the firemen and trucks.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm just looking at engine three, I mean, the cost of engine three, I mean, yeah, there's a, a long list of, of stuff that was addressed, but I mean, it doesn't seem like there was any huge items, but that was a big number at the end. Just, just some true product lives. Yeah. It's just out in service now with the, uh, gearbox down?
At least a little bit, but it's all sort of.
Any other questions on the, uh, maintenance, well, testing, Stone Hill apparatus?
Sure.
A motion that we accepted, as we said.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carry. And the final item on our agenda is review of the S C B A bottle inventory to, uh, put into the ten-year replacement, uh, plan. Again, we don't have Bethels, but we can hope for Stone Hills. And, and the first thing that jumps out to me is, that's a lot of bottles. Yep, you got many bottles? Uh, I guess seventy-three.
Three, um, three trucks, um, some training bottles, um, officers, there's some officers that have packs in their vehicle, when you have a pack in your vehicle, you have that spare bottle in it, for the standard. So, um, we actually did start to cut back on what we had on the, uh, rescue. So, can we, uh, cut back a, a little bit more? Yeah, but I don't have an exact number off the top of my head.
Yeah, I, I, I just, I mean, I kind of thought, you know, out my head, I was looking, I, engine one, engine, engine three, and one, rescue two, eighteen packs. It's made better, you know, you got six packs, you know, a truck. Plus a spare bottle, that makes thirty-six bottles. And then, you know, add, open your truck, open down, so it could be a vehicle, you know?
Tommy has two.
Yeah, I, I don't. I see, to me, it almost seemed like they had double the amount of bottles that we needed.
I think a lot of that also was when we had more, uh, apparatus, we never cut back based on the number of packs that we had. But I'm making sure we have, had, that's covered, especially for training. And, and training, you need to have a spare bottle anyway. So you're always going through two, and that way we weren't taking anything off the apparatus other than the way it trained.
Mm-hmm. So how many, how many packs do you keep for training?
Five. Well, that's when we took them off.
But they were, the, the packs that we have now, the spare ones, plus the drain packs, we're gonna all put the new truck.
Right.
Looks like they just probably six or seven with spare packs that we.
Yeah, so, so when I was, I was at thirty-six with three trucks, now with the new trucks, that brings, brings a pain of forty-eight. So, I guess, so, I don't know, still seems high.
Okay.
Probably closer, probably closer to sixty.
Bottles on the, um, on the rescue, because now we don't have a cascade to be built, so it's better to have a couple extra spare bottles.
Cause I, I don't know, I was just looking at, it seems like probably about two-thirds of your bottles are due to be, be replaced within the, within the ten-year.
Yeah, we didn't need last year.
Yeah, looks like you got a good handful that are due this year.
I think we have fourteen coming up.
I don't record any in your budget this year.
Well, we have this year and the next year's budget disposed in the twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-five.
So it's, uh, August and October of twenty twenty-five, so that's what next year's budget.
Well, I, I guess my question is then, you refine and maybe come up with a.
You want a better max number?
Uh, yeah, better max number, I'd be seventy-three, just, I'd be seventy-three, seems like too many to me, actually. Might be off.
Our decision point on those budget season next year.
Yeah.
Right? So we have time to look at it.
Well, this is, well, this is one of those items they wanted in the ten-year plan. Fire, we just, you know, we did the tires, so I was trying to, you know? And I saw that there's, you know, a couple coming up next year, so. If we're not gonna, if you, if the ones that are due for replacement next year don't need to be replaced, that's terrific. So I think the next batch.
I don't think you wanna get to a point where you're not gonna replace any, because then you're gonna be replacing all of them all in one shot, you should try, try stagnant.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, they would be stagnant, I think the next batch that come up for replacement are in twenty thirty.
Twenty eights in there.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there's some twenty eights in there, and then, then there's twenty thirties, and then there's thirty fours. So it's, it's like every two years.
Well, that's what we're trying to do, it's almost getting to a point where it's gonna be a truck at a time.
Yes, I'm done every year.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so I, I think the, the goal that we're towards is, what's, what's a true number of bottles that we need? Is it, is it seventy-three or do we, do we only need sixty, do we need sixty-five?
I don't understand what it's, or do I have any extra bottles right now? I, I know the pause to get more.
Of course.
I understand that, but if we have a major incident, we're gonna need a lot.
That's next, we're gonna be downsizing for forty-five, thirty-nine. We can go for more bottles, depending on whether we even have either a cascade or a manpower to rebuild bottles on scene. Always easier just to wrap another spare.
But was it your department had the bigger bottles or was it Bethel had?
No, we have the bigger bottles, which we're gonna start to downsize it because the size weight is just not conducive to anything.
Are you refilling them on scene now?
But hell, we're not, we don't have heat in.
We're not gonna put it in a bag, but pick up and take it back for fire outs over at the end.
Right.
A major incident, we'll call it Denver for the cascade, but Francis J. Clark part, that part, there was a stack of bottles flowing to that table on the ground. Just from, from our department alone. You know, I, I think most of the people were on air on outside on running the pumps and stuff. So we were constantly changing models.
But Bethel has a cascade on their rescue.
Even just a cascade off their bottles, it's not, it's not like.
It's not a compressor, so you're gonna.
We'd never run out of air.
I, I.
I mean, you can fill hundreds of bottles on that truck.
The other thing I might have to consider too, we said the, uh, standards for the S C B A are, uh, just changed. Okay, so you may be looking at fifty types of air packs, uh, they're called to that five point fives. Mask, I was changing that, face regulators, there could be a lot more coming down just over to the air packs. Just to order the show.
You're full of goodness.
Go to all these summer, go to all these shows, and then, and then, guy said, baby, go. Do you wanna get these two wire frames? They're, they're kind of taking off from the old stuff, fancy. Five point five high pressure all those stuff. And the guy said, why, why you need? I said, well, we felt it made it more comfortable and more useful to people. No matter what the weather, I just buy her some, I said, the only thing we're gonna be selling is the five point fives.
Whoa. I mean, that's a, that's a, that's down the road, is I did put into the, the tenure plan of starting to look at upgrading air packs. I know Bethel was looking at.
We ordered air packs two years ago, still haven't seen them.
But I put in.
Three years ago.
I think in twenty-five, uh, twenty-six or twenty-seven, I started looking at replacing, um, packs per truck. And that made me buying different bottles, but then they're all gonna start to offer the, uh, the high pressure five point fives.
It's in that until means we have to change the cas, it's, that's why we have the four point fives.
Okay, our, our train back to Bethel, it's like, I said.
He said.
All right, so I'll make a motion that, uh, Chief Baker comes back to us with a, a definitive number of bottles that he needs to have on hand that we can, or guys can get replacements in for that point.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So, carry. Motion for adjournment?
A vote.
Favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Bill, for your.
Thank you, Bill.